All right, let's call the committee of the whole to order this evening. Good evening, everyone. Let's, first I'll start with moving to approve the minutes of the January 9th meeting.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Thanks to our outgoing assistant clerk. I'll ask you for putting these together. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye opposed, and that passes. And with that, colleagues, I know I had alluded to possibly not having much of a substantive update on downtown redevelopment for our meeting this evening, but we do have some approvals out of ABR that Director Lineiger would like to discuss, and we'll probably go from there with our other items on our agenda, but I don't see any need for any executive session or anything like that this evening. But Director Lineiger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. As the chairman noted, I do have just a quick update related to ABR. You've seen a lot of these slides before from previous updates over the months since we last approved, City Council last took action on the term sheet back in May. So we are now up to, I believe it's meeting, public meeting number eight, I'm sorry, number 19, occurred since our last update, and that was on December 13th with the Architectural Board Review. At that meeting, the ABR did authorize or refer the plans back to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission previously approved the preliminary development plan. ABR by referring it back basically concluded that the preliminary plans, as they've been since modified since Planning Commission has seen them, are consistent with the rules and regulations for a preliminary development plan, and they're on the right track for final development plan, submittal and approval. So that's the action that the Architectural Board Review took on the 13th. They did have several conditions, as the Planning Commission did. The first thing they did is they restated the Planning Commission's conditions, which are noted in number one. You've seen these before. The rest of the conditions, I think there's a total of nine of them, really deal with some of the details that need to be worked out as the plans transition from a preliminary plan to a final detailed constructions, not quite a construction set, a design development set of plans. Dealing with the Curtis block and how it integrates with the building that'll be attached to it, dealing with some of the trash areas, really just some of the contextual items related to the site. I'll make sure that the clerk's office has a copy of this presentation. This was kind of a last minute thing here today, so that you can go through and better see these conditions. Our website has also been updated with all the latest meetings, so it is current on all the meetings. So if you go to LakewoodOH.gov/downtowndevelopment, you'll see all of the meeting approvals that have taken place to date. As far as where we are from a site program, as a result of some of the changes to the Curtis block, it was previously showing that we were down 20 units. I show minus seven right now as a pending number. There's a lot of fluidity in the plan set as far as what happens inside the buildings. We're really kind of focused on the outside right now. So it could be as many as seven, it could be more. We don't think right now it'll be less than seven units. We're also talking about some bigger picture items, about the overall use of the Curtis block and how that may be better positioned as perhaps a non-residential building too. So stay tuned for that. That'll get worked out as we move into final design. On that, just to note, you won't see anything in front of our boards and commissions in January. Going from preliminary plans to final plans, there has to be some work, there's some design work that has to be done. So don't expect to see anything this month. As soon as we would see anything, pending any changes, would be in February. Our plan is to have a joint Planning Commission and ABR meeting to bring this back. Maybe we'll have multiple meetings because there is a lot of overlap between what the two boards review. So stay tuned on where that is, but even though you may not see forward-facing public meetings, there's going to be work going on behind the scenes. With that, I'm going to change screens here, just to show you, as I've done in the past, just kind of where the plan sets are. So these are just going to be some montage views, looking at previous streetscapes back when the hospital was on the site. So utilizing Google Map and some of its history, we can look back and do this. So this is Bell Avenue at the south end of the site, looking north towards Detroit, what it looked like 2018-ish. Starting to drop in, this will be the town home, I'm sorry, this will be the town homes and the garden apartments that we're starting to see kind of on the edge here, on the southern edge. A little bit farther north, now up to where the side of the garage will be, and the liner units will be looking out towards Detroit. So we start to see the garage off to the right and the liner units that get attached to that building. The streetscape stuff, I know there's no landscape elements or streetscape elements, street amenities, that's on purpose. We're focused on the building design right now. So this is Bell looking, I think we're looking south now. So we're staying on the side of the garage, looking back towards, to the south, so these are more liner units, looking back to the garden apartments, and then the town homes even farther back off of that. One thing to note is the town homes will probably come back as a separate design item in the future. Right now, the focus is on, so we'll set everything up for seven for-sale town homes, but the actual design of those will be a later item, probably as a future phase, separate phase. So this is the Marlowe Avenue, flipping sides here, looking, actually looking south from Detroit. So this is the side of building five, I'm sorry, building two. One of the changes you'll note, there was a one-story porch here, now it's a two-story porch. Some of the upper elevations are stepped back, based on some feedback from ABR. Looking at the, now looking at the guard departments. One of the things that changed, you'll see on, that's a little hard to see on this view, you'll see on the southern end, there's some gable elements, something that's more reflective of the single-family homes that are across the street, and then the building kind of breaks midway. It has more flat roofs to reflect what's being proposed on the project to the north. ABR did ask them to make that entire building have more of the elements of the single-family homes, made more sense from a design perspective. So again, just another perspective, looking back now, looking north on Marlowe towards Detroit. So that's the last one I wanted to share, just so you got to get a sense of how this kind of layers into the fabric of the existing neighborhood. It's one of the things we've been talking about through the beginning of this process is how do we integrate with the neighborhood, based on the feedback we've had to this point with Planning Commission and now ABR, and the fact that it's been referred back to Planning Commission, the applicant is doing that. And so we'll look towards final development plans here in the future. And that's really the update I have at this point. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just one quick one, and I'll turn over my colleagues. Some of the residents on Marlowe here, actually right where we're looking right now, noted that there were surveyors near or on the property recently. I don't know if that would mean anything or...
It was actually probably our, well, it could have been either one. It could have been our surveyors out there taking some as-bilts of the work we did as a result of the work we did on the site. But Castor did also have their surveyors out, trying to set pins and get ready for this final development plan that they have to put together.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions? Councilman Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and would appreciate if when the clerk gets these documents, you can email them to us, because I'd love to look over them. So I'm trying to understand, you know, council's role here is obviously, you know, the development agreement. And I just want to kind of understand what the administration's, where that fits in their timeline, you know, will there be three full readings? Will council have that time to look at it, so that we can really dig into the document? Because that's what I'm most looking forward to, to kind of get into the details of that. So just curious if you could give an update on when we can expect to see that and how long council will have with it.
So in order to get to the development agreement, we had to at least get through the preliminary development plan, so we could understand the general basis of what we were going to be seeing from a development standpoint. We're there now. We've had a draft of the development agreement put together for, since really July, but it's really been sitting and waiting while we work through this process. The other thing that kind of leaped in front of the development agreement is a compensation agreement with the schools, as we've talked in a joint meeting several months ago. That agreement is progressing now, and we're, because of where we are at this point, we can pick that development agreement back up and start to advance that and get that in front of city council prior, because the development plan's also going to be put in front of you. Our goal is to get the development agreement in front of you before you start to see the development plan, but keep you informed where the development plan is, since that is informing every, all the words that you're going to read in the agreement itself. So I don't have a specific timeline at this point. Just, we're at the point now where we can pick that development agreement up and start to work through that. It's just a matter of how many iterations we have to pass back and forth between us and the developer.
Any other questions? Vice President Kepel?
Thank you. This isn't so much a question, it's just a statement that I've really appreciated having these meetings livestreamed, so I can follow along. So not seeing a whole lot of surprises here, because we've been able to watch it or listen to it as needed, so thank you very much for doing that.
And the recordings are on the website, too, for anybody that didn't see the livestream. You're welcome to go back and watch the meeting itself, too.
Just trying to follow along. At what point is there going to be a determination, or has it already been made about the certificate of appropriateness for the Curtis block?
So with that, let me actually go to another screen. You actually might not have been at the last update that we talked about. So where we left with the Curtis block, I apologize, I have to get all this back in my head. I may not actually have the Curtis block drawings here with me. I don't think I do. I might have to pull those up between meetings, however. So where we left with the Curtis block is, originally, ABR had asked, gave the developer two options, a path to go forward. One was to remove the addition that was shown, there's a three-story addition, actually, I do have that. If you recall, there's a three-story addition similar to this that was shown as part of the original proposal, and it was modified multiple times as we went through the conversation with Planning Commission, ABR. But ABR then gave them two paths forward. One was to remove it entirely off of the roof of the Curtis block, or to come back with something that was lower in profile and was designed to be part of the Curtis block, and then an addition that could look different than, and should look different than the Curtis block, attached to the Curtis block. That is the direction where we ultimately ended up going with the developer. ABR reviewed a modified version of the Curtis block that showed a one-story addition over the top of it, that was carried across more of the width of the building, with some caveats. The ABR was comfortable with the direction it was going, but we need to have all those details that we'll see with the final development plan put together in order for ABR to make a decision on the certificate of appropriateness. But generally, the direction that the developer is headed with the Curtis block is pointing in the right direction, pending those details being submitted that demonstrate how they can comply with the other 10, the 10 points.
So the developer's able to proceed, not knowing if that certificate will come, to proceed to developing a final development plan?
They're proceeding under the good, under good faith that they are moving in the right direction, and that if they continue in that direction, they should receive that certificate of appropriateness.
All right, thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions? Councilman Bullock?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and Director Lineiger and the administration. So I agree with comments of others, it's been good communication and good study work. So just to clarify my understanding of what you presented, Director Lineiger, and make sure I'm following. So we don't, of course, know final timelines. However, last we spoke, all kinds of stakeholders in this project are keen to break ground as soon as possible. So if things go smoothly, the hope would be that we get some of these critical documents moving, drafted, and then for consideration this spring. Is that accurate? Does he, at least as far as intention and desired timeline goes?
Sooner than spring.
Okay. So, and then considered and potentially requested for approval in spring?
Yeah, precedent, put in front of city council, the development agreement, and then eventually then the development plan as it works. So the development plan has to go back through the same process it just went through with Planning Commission and with ABR. While the development plan is going through that approval process with them, advance the development agreement to city council, and then bring the development agreement, or bring the development plans up to city council with any board and commission approvals that have been authorized. And then allow city council your three readings, as well as the meetings in between with committees as necessary. And hopefully, these updates are also, are helping facilitate that conversation now and keeping everybody informed of where we are, so there aren't any surprises when we get there here in the, in the hopefully not-too-distant future.
You're making me remember, I was at a work meeting once, and the guy told a funny story, says, "So I learned from the bosses that surprises are bad, even good surprises are bad." So in that spirit, the communication is appreciated. So maybe, could this work style work? It sounds as if we're going to need to have the bandwidth to work intensively on this, if we're going to have any hope of holding to an ambitious timeline, which is appropriately ambitious, and that the same content's going to come through all three boards and, well, two boards and city council iteratively. So there's not going to be a moment where, okay, it's all done, city council now has a long period of time to think about it and get back to us. It's more going to be that step, the first step's going to lead to the next and the next, and quite frankly, the development agreement, which has got the most granularity of it, is really going to be informed by the earlier steps. So would it not make sense, then, for us to be talking to you on an ongoing basis slash the others in administration, so that we're not surprising you in the other direction with anything new or different? So we should be talking now with the planning department and the mayor's office, if we've got any input to get in, right?
Well, I hope that's what we're doing now.
Right, right.
I hope that's what we did back when council provided your priorities for the project. I hope those are still holding true, because that's what we're using to help guide the recommendations with the developer.
All that's valid, it's just that this is such an important project that, you know, I want to follow along as we go. And if there are important critical details that some of us have in mind for development agreement, sooner's better, right?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
And keep in mind, the development agreement, as you've seen from past development agreements we did with Solov, as well as then with Studio West, they're really more about the mechanics of transfers, in this case, land transfers. This can be more about the mechanics of requirements that are on the developer in exchange for receiving any type of incentives from the city. So it's, there's some granularity to that document, but it's, the details are, for the most part, spelled out in the plans. There will be some specifics, there'll, there's some color that'll be added in the development agreement, but that development is really starting to follow, is following based on everything that we're talking about here in these meetings.
Councilman Rader?
Thank you, and thank you to the administration for all this great progress. And I heard, in response to Mr. Bullock's question, that groundbreaking will be before spring. That's exciting. Also, kind of jerked my...
Oh, an agreement.
An agreement, not a groundbreaking.
Agreement. Okay, good. Well, that's actually slightly less exciting. However, it did prompt me to ask, when can we expect the site to be brought to grade? And sort of, when will the pardon-my-dust traffic pattern discussion start and sort of roll out the communications of what's happening? Remember, this is my neighborhood. I'm likely to get an inbox flooded with neighbors asking a lot of questions once we start getting to that phase of things. So do we have a sense when that portion of this is going to take place? And I guess, what's the process for letting us know, so that we can sort of communicate with our neighbors about what's going to happen next year?
So there won't be any additional changes to the site until construction starts on it. At one point in time, we did have conversations about bringing it all the way up to grade. As we had continued those conversations with the developer, we didn't need to do that necessarily to accomplish what we need to do on the site, which was to eliminate any of the PCE chemicals from entering into the sanitary sewer, which we were successful in doing by doing the work that we did. But if we were also, if we were to fill out all the way to the site, then the developer is just going to have to haul that dirt away once they start to move forward. So the changes to the site from the city's standpoint until there's construction have stopped. When it's now brought up to grade, it'll be as a result of development. In terms of the traffic pattern and those discussions, we had a meeting with the Planning Commission, I believe it was back in October. Yeah, in October, we had a meeting with the Planning Commission, talked about the traffic study. We did have several residents that showed up to have some conversations or suggest their input into that. So the traffic study is underway. It may even be completed at this point. We'll have an update again tomorrow on that. So they're working on the traffic study, and that'll be presented with, to Planning Commission as part of the final development plan, to show what the traffic impacts are. Based on some preliminary estimates and looking at the historic use of the site, there wasn't, we didn't expect anything significant to be shown in the traffic study. This will actually have significantly less traffic than it was, than it was there when it was the hospital, so.
Well, thank you for your hard work, and just like Vice President Kepel mentioned about the, sort of the earlier work, earlier topics, you know, just these public meetings, the access to this information has certainly allowed us to move forward with the community on this, and at least folks having the opportunity. Maybe we all don't agree all the time on everything, maybe we won't always agree everything, but everybody at least had their opportunity to have their say and hear and see very clearly what was happening as this progress happened. So thank you for that hard work.
Thank you for the support.
Vice President Kepel?
Thanks, I am, I hope I didn't miss this, as we were having a sidebar here, but with the, I know when we were talking about bringing the site to grade, I thought we had budgeted, I feel like it was like a million dollars to do that. What happened with that money, if we didn't bring it to grade?
I don't, it was actually, I think we budgeted a little bit more. It did cost about a million dollars to raise it, just with the change in, with inflation costs and other things that we were dealing with as we came off those initial estimates. So the money just stays in the hospital fund, anything that wasn't spent. So that's where the money remains, it's just in that expense account.
So no extra money for my ice rink?
What's that?
No extra money for my ice rink to go in there?
No.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Bullock?
So on that point, so I do appreciate the work that the administration has been doing to reflect, incorporate, accommodate, communicate the city council priorities of various kinds. We don't know yet, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Lineiger, for example, the final design of the public square, that I call the public square, correct? Because we've been doing other steps first, and we're still working through those other steps first. And so the kind of key element that comes to mind would be, okay, we're going to face some time pressure to move approvals and consider in a timely basis some of the documents. There's all the financial agreements, too, but then that puts some time pressure on that critical piece of the project, which is important, I think, you know, everybody agrees, right? So I certainly can work with the ambiguity of that, but the question is, at what point and how are we going to be making decisions to detail that, decide on essentially finishes and how much investment we've got for it, and if we wanted to enhance beyond what was proposed, that we can make a decision about doing that?
Trying to pull that file up. So Planning Commission, both Planning Commission and ABR did, they did review those items, and so there is some granularity to the space. And I apologize, I'm trying to pull stuff up here on the fly, and it's not always that easy.
Sure.
So this is some older stuff. I may not have the most current, access to the most current information sitting here right now, but, actually, it might have been this one. No, that was... There was some specific information that was shared with both Planning Commission and ABR, and they did start to look at the general layout, the general use of the space, and were supportive of the direction that was going. So there have been some high-level decisions made as it relates to the open, or to the community space, as far as its configuration. Some of the amenities are starting to be shown in there with the landscaping, with some water features that are in the space, incorporating some change in materials, the materials to be determined, a representation of Bell Creek that used to flow through the site. So some of those decisions have been made as we've progressed through this process, and I believe I've shared those with council in previous conversations. So, but to be clear, there was some, there has been some decisions made on that space.
So, but we're not, it's not all yet, correct?
No, so at this point, when we talk about final development plan, we've made decisions on general location, scale, size, general location of the amenities, the types of amenities in there, but we haven't figured out the granularity of, okay, what type of water feature is this? What type of material is this? Is it paver? Is it just different stamps of concrete or colors and textures of concrete? We haven't figured some of those details out, but we have made some leaps forward as to, okay, this is a, this is a general space, it's going to be left for programming, ice rinks in the winter, farmers market, artist markets, other events.
Yeah.
Ban things on Friday nights, or whatever it might be for programming. We've made those decisions at this point.
Okay. So maybe, so all I'm trying to do is get on some common understanding of our process and how to move forward. So I recall that there's a lot of interest by the community and city council members in that very point, and I do remember the discussions more than once about the commemorating the creek and so forth, and I don't think I recall hearing that decisions were made, and I remember hearing that those were coming. And that's, I get the process, so that's not criticism, but I do want to know, so if we have some, you know, we want to get our oar in, how do we do that and when? Is it too late? Is there still a chance? And how do we proceed with one another?
Again, as part of these updates, I'm hoping I'm feeding, I'm getting feedback from city council that I can take back to the developer and include these plans are developed.
Okay.
What I don't want to get to is to the end, and then say, you know what, council doesn't...
Agreed, agreed.
I'm not going to be extreme. Council doesn't like the plaza in the middle of the site where it's shown, they'd rather see it on the corner.
Right.
That would be detrimental to the project, to the developer, and to the progress that we made to this point. If we have your feedback to this point, if there's something that we're missing that I'm not aware of, other than we haven't quite figured out the details, we haven't figured out necessarily what is that ownership structure? Does the city retain the land? Is it an easement? That the city is in full control versus previous, the previous development agreement, the city got so many days of use of the plaza?
Those are all critically important, though, by the way.
Those are all things that are important, that you will see. Those are some of the color that will be in the development agreement, that'll be in front of you. Alternatively, there's some decisions that, the construction on this is a two-year construction cycle, so we may just lay out some general terms, hey, the city's going to, I'm just going to, as an example, the city's going to retain an easement over this, and we retain all controlling rights over it. We don't know exactly how we're going to work that out, but in the future, what we'll have is a public facility and use agreement for this. And that'll be something that comes back later on, once we get, because we don't have to figure all that out upfront, we need to figure that out once we get closer to opening. So there's some decision points that we can hold off on, but I hope that as we're moving through this process, because as we go through a zoning process, there are decisions being made when ABR and Planning Commission make preliminary approvals, there's some reliance on those decisions at that point, that, okay, this is the direction we're going. We're going to go now and invest hundreds of thousands of dollars into final development plans, and there might be some movement on the edges of some things, but we're not going to be wholesale changes on things when we conclude this process.
Okay, so communicate now, communicate one-on-one with you, and the, but an example that I do think council could have maybe some potential impact on would be if, for example, we thought the budget for the finishes was smaller than we hoped, and therefore that would have an impact on the materials and some of the features and whatever else, then the question is, could we help?
Sure.
To improve the quality of those finishes hypothetically with ARPA funds or some other source. But we won't know... But we won't know that that's a decision point for city council unless we're communicating-
Correct.
That's all I'm driving at.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. And before I go to you, Vice President Kepel, if council members should want to allocate ARPA funds for any purpose of this, should, is there any vehicle we ought to build for that to be the case? And would that be even helpful at this stage?
I would suggest we have a conversation to understand what it is, what the intent is, what the purpose is, and then we can, we can have, facilitate that conversation and see where we need to go from there. It could be something that's already incorporated into the project. If it's a value add, then we go to the developer and say, hey, we'd like to consider this. How do we accomplish this?
Sure.
So just to, let's keep the communication lines open.
Okay, thank you. Just, so to put a finer point on that, if any of my colleagues are interested in contributing in that way through, through the funds they have to allocate, please be in touch with the planning department now and often on that topic.
Vice President Kepel?
Thanks. I just, and to Councilman Bullock's points about being engaged with the process, I'm, would just suggest that we all, of us on council, go back and look at the document, and Councilman Marx, this is unfortunate, it was before you were, you were on, but could go back and look at our council priority document and maybe also, and Director Lanninger, is the, the version that was presented to ABR, the, with, is that the most recent visual representation at the last ABR meeting? Or most, maybe recent isn't, but best, most accurate at the moment?
So I would actually have to compile a couple of documents together for you.
Okay.
Because they were coming through in phases. For example, the image I have up on the screen right now, this was the latest as it relates to the non, to basically the Curtis Block, building one that's attached to it, I'm sorry, building, yeah, building one that's attached to it, and then the building A off to the other side. This has the one-story addition. So this was that northern third of the site. The next iteration of plans then dealt with the southern two-thirds of the site. So it's, it's a compilation of a couple of different documents that I would have to put together for you. This actually might, no, this doesn't have it. So there's probably three to four documents I would have to give you because there's, there's finer detail on this, on the committee plaza too, that's not in the set.
Is that, I mean, I know, you know, you're copious amounts of spare time. If you're able to do that, that would be helpful, I think, if we could all go through and look at what we said is our priorities, where the project is now, so we can raise any questions or concerns to go through. I know, it's also, I know just personally, it's been helpful to me to listen to those ABR meetings. I know there were, for instance, the ADA, the accessibility element has been a priority for me personally, and I've heard them discuss that, and there's always a push-pull, right? So there's some members of ABR saying, we'd like to remove this feature, and Director Lanninger saying, well, council has this ADA priority, and kind of trying to figure out how we balance all the different things pushing on the site. So I would just encourage everyone to take a look at the document that we said was our priorities, and also if Director Lanninger, if you can pull those together, then we can kind of compare where we are now.
It would seem to me the intent of both the administration and council is to just not have any surprises or gotcha moments along the way with any of this. Right? Any further questions? Okay, then, Director Lanninger, thank you for the presentation this evening. And I'll also say, as, as we get closer and closer and move forward with things, the more different meetings that we could have on the, you know, on our collective calendars, you know, the better, so that we're keeping to a timeline. Very good. Okay. With that, we'll move on to three appointment-based resolutions, for which frankly, I'd like to turn over to any colleagues that have nominees, individuals to discuss for any of these vacancies, to possibly recommend tonight, or at least to discuss now, and then appoint in the future. Councilwoman Marx.
Thank you. Well, I'm in favor of appointing Jason Frederick to the Art Advisory Board. He is a graphic designer. He participates in the Lakewood Arts Festival, and he's very well-traveled. He's worked in Chicago, Brooklyn, Holland, and has a broader sense of art from the world. And I think he's very enthusiastic and would be very excited to serve in this advisory capacity, so I hope we consider him. Thank you.
Any other, well, since we're on the Public Art Advisory Board, which is, I believe, what you said you were recommending for, while we're on that resolution, are there any other potential nominees for that seat? Or any context our council office needs to provide us?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Bullock?
I don't, I just, I welcome Councilwoman Marx's recommendation or nomination. I think that's a good idea, and I also recall he has a robust sense of humor too, and a different kind of art, so it's nice to have a cross-pollinization of perspectives, so I'd be happy to support that.
Great. Any further discussion? Cal, or I'm sorry, Vice President Kepel?
Thank you. I'm happy to support Jason also, and he's certainly been interested in serving his community. I just had a question. Do we know what word he's in four? Oh, perfect, because the person coming off was in four, and part of the reason we, then President O'Malley and I suggested her was to make sure word four had representation. So another reason to support it. Great.
All right, then I will, I will move that we amend Resolution 2022-59 to insert the name Jason Frederick into the blank.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. And just to be extra thorough, then I'll, I'll move to recommend adoption to full council of Resolution 2022-59 as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded at any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. Colleagues, do you have any other recommendations for any of these other boards and commissions at this time?
I, I, Mr. Chair, so for ABR and looking at, it looks like we have two applicants that have expressed interest in reviewing their resumes. Chris Eggervery, I've never met him, but his resume is very impressive. Went to Pratt and has a degree in architecture, and has a pretty extensive CV, so certainly qualified. Put interest in the rest of the committee's thoughts on that vacancy.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to let council know that I did share the ABR resumes with the planning department, and they might have some input after viewing them.
Any existing recommendations that, or you need some time?
No, we've looked at both resumes. There's a point in time where we would like to have, we have four architects on the board, we had five. There's no requirement that you have to be an architect on the board, but certainly to have a design sense so you can help facilitate the, the purpose and goals and the regulations that the board has to follow. And while that's a goal, and the other applicant is, we appreciate the interest, there really isn't a design background there. And so while, while we, we'd like to find someone who's not an architect, we do have an architect in hand that's very much qualified, that looks like they'd be a good, good representation for the city and help fulfill the mission and purpose of ABR. So I'll stop short of making a recommendation, but that was just kind of how we looked at it, and as we look to future applicants, and to please know that it don't necessarily have to be an architect, so.
I appreciate that feedback. To the colleagues, to my left, is there a question or just some discussion? Sure. Please, Vice President Kepel.
Thank you. Thank you, and I know we only have the, the two applicants, so, or, you know, at the moment, but I, Director Lanninger, remind me, is there only one female member on the ABR currently?
So ABR, yes. Actually, that's been an issue with some of our boards and commissions, it's just the diversity of the, of the members. But yes, there is, we do have one female member on, on ABR. There are none on planning commission. We have one or two now on BZA, but right now, yes, it is, it is a male, it is a male, all male board.
Um, it's just a bit of a concern that we're getting one particular perspective, but you want to, these are the applicants we have?
Yes, these are the applicants we have. I certainly could entertain others that are not applicants, but might be unfair to some of the applicants we have, of course. Any further discussion, reasons not to appoint Councilman Baker's recommendation, et cetera?
Happy to support Mr. Evergray. He seems like a, just judging my application, seems like somebody who's very experienced, would understand what it means to serve on a board as well. I have no qualms with, with that, but I would like to know if, is it, are we just down to the members currently? Is there some need for urgency in appointing tonight above maybe waiting and talking to the individual? Or, again, happy to support tonight, I'm just wondering if there's any time pressure on this or not.
I mean, I'll, before I turn it to Director Lanninger, there, I suppose there is a rather large development proposed that's-
Okay.
-with our architectural board of review.
Good enough for me. I mean, we can certainly, and again, he comes-
An odd number of, helpful.
Yeah. And he certainly comes highly, you know, highly credentialed, so would have, had no problem supporting, so that's, that's good enough. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director Lanninger, do you have anything else to add to that? Okay. Okay, we don't want any two-two deadlocks at ABR.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and if there is, you know, other, other folks that council members have in mind that would be worthy applicants, I'd certainly, and I'd be willing to defer to the extent we would then reach out to those people and encourage them to apply. Short of that, I mean, I'd be ready to, to make a motion to, to put Mr. Eggervery's name in there.
Before I entertain any motions, Direct, or I'm sorry, Councilman Bullock, did you have anything?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't, and I did ask around with a fairly extensive network of people I've worked with over the years, and typically will get a fair number of applicants in, and I, this time around, didn't, didn't have a response. That's, I mean, I think what the council vice president mentioned is important, and it's kind of puzzling that we, we don't have better gender balance on two very powerful boards and commissions, so I think we ought to be working after that. Did anybody recommend, did Mr. Ever, Eververies? Eggervaries' application come in just from a general public response, which, which would be just fine and wonderful because it means our public postings are working? Or was there somebody who recommended his application?
Clerk Bach, was there a, was the means by which Mr. Eggervery?
I think that he found it through the public posting. It was posted on the city website in November. It was posted on social media, the city's social media, I think several of you posted on social media. I also shared it with the Chamber of Commerce and the nonprofit PR roundtable group that I'm a part of. I was trying to help get the word out, and, you know, I feel like we did some robust outreach, and this is all we got.
And we've had a pretty strong group that's served at least a term, so maybe some of that is just we've had a lot of talent already. So I don't have a, a motion to make or anything like that. I just, I appreciate the points made, and maybe we can really make a concerted recruitment effort for the next time around. And I do think it'd be ideal if, if one of us are talking to the person, because I don't know the gentleman beyond the resume, so that said, I'm entirely happy to, to support a motion if one is made.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll, I'll, I'll move to amend Resolution 2022-49 to insert the name Chris Eggervery into the blank.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded at any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes, and I'll then move to recommend adoption of Resolution 2022-49 as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded at any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. Looking at our, the last of our three appointment resolutions on the docket for Committee of the Whole, is there any recommendations or applicants for Board of Zoning Appeals? I believe no.
There were no applications.
Okay. So unless anybody wanted to discuss it anyway, I, I'm of a mind to just defer that one. Keep searching.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I, maybe some more social media or outreach that we can do. I'll certainly try to do my part to say that BZA has an open appointment.
Thank you, and credit to our council office, Clerk Bach especially, for seeking to offer up that role to people who were declined for other roles that they may have applied for. So it's not for lack of trying on our council office's part, certainly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll move to adjourn Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded at any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes, we're adjourned, and hopefully we'll start our full council meeting in about seven minutes. Thank you, everybody.